Thank you for joining us this evening for our 68th commemoration of the Brown v. Board of Education case. I'm excited to announce Janine Nelson, LDF's president and director counsel, who will be moderating this evening's panel. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let me just turn my mic on, although in this room with this crowd, I don't know that I even need one, but let's do it. Hello? Hi. Okay, here we go. Good evening, everyone. Thank you Samantha for that introduction, and thank you all for being here. We are excited to have yet another celebration of Brown versus Board of Education. So I'll begin by saying Happy Brown Day. It is a day that we at the Legal Defense Fund celebrate with great pride and excitement because it is a reminder of the power and strength of individuals, families, communities, everyday citizens, putting their lives on the line, putting their livelihood on the line in pursuit of perfecting our union and our democracy. That's what Brown represents to us, and we are delighted to be able to celebrate it with all of you, particularly at this moment in our country when we need a source of strength, when we need to remember what is possible in the face of all that seems impossible, in some of our darkest moments, when we cannot envision a different future, which many of us may be feeling right now. The people who litigated Brown and the families who sought to desegregate our public school system, they were able to envision something that was almost unimaginable, and they succeeded. And so, on this particular day, I know I'm drawing great strength from the history and legacy of Brown, which is now 68 years old, and it's done a tremendous amount of work of the, in the nearly seven decades since that famous Supreme Court decision. But as we all know, there's still a lot more work to do, and today's panel is going to help illuminate some of those issues for us today. I do want to start, though, by asking that we take a moment of silence for the victims of the Buffalo massacre that occurred on Saturday. That is one of, at this point, 200 mass shootings in the United States in this year alone. It was a racially motivated attack against a community that was simply existing while black and suffered at the hands of a white supremacist motivated by a toxic political environment. And so if we can take a moment of silence to acknowledge those who lost their lives, I would appreciate it. Thank you. So, before we begin in earnest, I want to say thank you to the law firm of Sidley Austin for hosting us this evening in this lovely space. And as you came in, I'm sure you saw the lovely reception area, and I hope you will join us after this live event for that. And for those of you who are live streaming, welcome. Thank you for joining us on screen. We're delighted to be in virtual conversation with you. We, as I said, have gathered a wonderful panel here today to talk about the issues facing our public school system. And you all have probably heard much about something called CRT. And by now, I hope you've heard about GRT as well. And one of them is a legit boogeyman and threat to our national security and democracy. The other is a misnomer about a fight essentially to stamp out discourse on race in this country. And we're going to unpack some of this today. We're going to talk about the historical context of segregation and desegregation, but most importantly, the anti-truth assault that is facing our public school curricula and what some very brave people are doing to counter that. So I'm excited to dig into the conversation with our panelists here tonight, and we will unpack some of these ideas and theories. I want to make sure that I give each of our panelists due justice, so I'm going to take a quick look at our notes and read their bios. But while I do that, I want to set this up a little by telling you how the Legal Defense Fund got into this fight. We found ourselves facing an executive order in 2020 that laid out what would ultimately be the blueprint for the wave of legislation that we are seeing across the country that is attempting to strip truth from public school curricula. There was an executive order issued by the former president, Executive Order 13950, that essentially banned discourse about race, discourse about diversity, equity, and inclusion in all federal agencies, in our military, in federal government spaces. Grantees who received federal contracts had to agree to not speak on matters of race or gender or other categories if they would cause anguish or feelings of guilt or shame for some people. That is the loose anti-first amendment language that we saw in an executive order issued by a U.S. president. When we read that, we knew that it was a manifesto against truth and against racial equity, and that it was a backlash to the wonderful protests and uprisings that occurred in the summer of 2020 following the tragic murder of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor. And so we jumped into action, and we litigated, and we tried to stop that executive order from going into, being enforced. Ultimately, it was rescinded when President Biden came into office, but that did not remove the threat. And that's what we're seeing today across the country in states like Texas and in many other areas where legislation has been passed on the state level to do that exact same thing, to prohibit conversation or any curricular interventions that cause anguish or guilt or give people a true sense of the difficult parts of United States history. And that's the climate, that is the context for this discussion as we face those challenges now on the state level that are metastasizing. So we have four amazing individuals to talk to us tonight, and I'm delighted to introduce them. First, it is such an honor and a privilege to have my dear friend, Jelani Cobb, who is a highly distinguished and renowned journalist and historian. He is an acclaimed author for his groundbreaking writings on race, history, and culture, which include the essential Kerner Commission report, The Matter of Black Lives, and The Substance of Hope: Barack Obama and the Paradox of Progress. He is a staff writer at The New Yorker. You all may follow his works like I do. And he has published pieces in The Washington Post, and Essence, and Vibe, and The Root. He is also a professor at Columbia University School of Law. More on that in a second.
Not School of Law.
I mean, School of, oh, you're right. I want to graft you into our profession. School of Journalism. I'm so used to saying School of Law. But you know what? The fact of the matter is, as well as you write on legal issues, you could be a professor of law, or certainly a legal historian. So Jelani has been at Columbia for quite some time at the IRA Lipman Center for Journalism and Civil and Human Rights. He graduated from Howard University and received his PhD in American History from Rutgers. He's the recipient of fellowships from the Fulbright to Ford, all of that good stuff. But most importantly, he was just named the dean of Columbia University's School of Journalism.
Thank you. I thought you were going to say, most importantly, I'm your fellow Queens native.
Well, that's right. That's right. That's true. That is probably the superlative fact. But I am just so proud of this particular accomplishment, and I think you can tie it all together to this discussion in that we have a person who has written so eloquently, so piercingly on issues of race, and so truthfully on issues of race, who is now leading one of the top performing journalism schools in the country and teaching the next generation of journalists how to do the very same thing. That is a very significant development and intervention. I'm so happy that you are dean. So that is a very high moment for me. So thank you for welcoming Dr. Jelani Cobb. I would also now like to welcome a mother and son team, Pam Francis and Drew Francis. And I'd like to take a point of privilege by pointing out that you all are our clients in a complaint that we filed against South Lake High School in the Carroll Independent School District in South Lake, Texas. And that complaint that we filed is based on the hostile environment that many students in your school have been experiencing as a result of this new climate of hostility around truth, around history, and racial discourse. But these two, this mother-daughter, mother-son pair and the family in the audience have not taken that sitting down. They have fought back, and they represent two organizations, Cultural and Racial Equity for Every Dragon, called creed. And that group is a group of parents, Black South Lake students, who are concerned about emotional and mental harms that are inflicted on the students by the school district's hostile environment. They also represent the South Lake Anti-Racism Coalition, SARC, and they are doing tremendous work that they'll share more with us. So Pam is the co-chair of the District Diversity Council in South Lake, and she's led the group in creating something that she'll be talking to us more about, a cultural competence action plan that became the subject of the litigation. So the effort to bring diversity into the curriculum was met with backlash. And her son Drew is a current high school student who is courageously fighting to ensure diversity, equity, and inclusion in his high school. He's an Eagle Scout, the president of the Board Game Club, and despite the challenges that he's faced as a student in South Lake, he will graduate summa cum laude later this month. So please salute these two. We're delighted to have them. And Drew, you can tell us about your plans going forward when we come to you next. And then finally, I want to introduce a new teacher in our public school system. I want to welcome Jadee Lam. She is a graduate of Montclair State University in Family Science and Human Development with a concentration in Family and Child Studies, and she minored in psychology. She's pursuing a master's in education at Johns Hopkins and is an Urban Teacher Rising Fellow. She teaches pre-K students, so some of our littlest learners, and she is going to offer the perspective of what she has seen in the classroom in terms of the need for diversity, equity, and inclusion for Black children in particular, because that is the group that predominates in your classrooms. So before I get in, let me just set a quick context for Brown v. Board. Brown v. Board decided 1954, 68 years ago, overturned Plessy versus Ferguson, which is a case that held that separate but equal was a perfectly constitutional concept. Brown versus Board of Education reversed that precedent and said that separate facilities cannot be equal, not when you look at the actual conditions of schools and the education that Black students were receiving. That separate but equal is a violation of the 14th Amendment of the Constitution. We know that it took two decisions in Brown to get to a place where schools were ordered with all deliberate speed to desegregate. And it still took some feet dragging to get us to any point of integration. There was a backlash of massive resistance. And I give you all this context to show that whenever you have a victory and you're making progress in the area of race and equity and inclusion, there is always a backlash. And we are in the moment of a backlash. But of course, we were able to overcome that massive resistance with a subsequent Supreme Court decision and additional organization and sacrifice on the part of families and students, and that is the moment that we're called into now. So with that context, I'll start with you, Jelani. In the Brown opinion, which was authored, a unanimous decision authored by Chief Justice Warren, Chief Justice Warren made a very poignant connection between education and democracy, education and citizenship, and talked about that being essential for everyone to have access to education in order to be good citizens and to contribute to the military and various professions. How do you see the current limitations that the anti-CRT movement and other movements to excise books and ban books and texts from our curricula? How do you see that affecting the quality of our democracy and the quality of education in this country?
First, I want to say thank you for the invitation. Even if I'm not doing anything officially, I always recognize May 17th. That date always stands out in my memory. I was staying with a friend. I was visiting a friend, and he was not going to be at home when I got in. And he didn't want to text the code to his door. So he said, oh, the code is the date of the Brown decision. And I was like, get out of here. That's my cellphone number. That's my cellphone password, too. It's not anymore.
Don't talk your phone.
Right. I was like, I said that knowing that I had already changed it. Now it's the emancipation proclamation date. But in any case, the point is that this date always registers, you know, in my mind and in the minds of people who know what a watershed that decision was and the backstory of the years, decades of effort that it took to get to this place. And so to point out the impact of this and the role of education, if we look at, you know, a couple who I've always found inspirational, it was Harry and Harriet Moore. You know, they were residents of Florida. He was born in 1905. She was born in 1902. They grew up in segregated communities. They excelled despite the constraints of segregated education in Florida at that time. They met, they went to Bethune-Cookman College together, they got their degrees together, and they went into education together. And Harry Moore became principal of a small Negro high school in Brevard County. In that context, he saw the disparities between what Black teachers were paid and what white teachers were paid, and began to complain about this. And those complaints eventually led to Harry and Harriet forming an NAACP chapter in 1934. And their efforts to improve the conditions for Black students in the state of Florida, as well as their efforts to mobilize and register Black voters, culminated in them being fired from the Florida school system. They were hired subsequently by the NAACP, which is how they were able to keep food on their table. And in 1951, on Christmas morning, a bomb ripped through their home pre-dawn, Christmas, killed both of them. They were, Harry died en route to the hospital, to the colored hospital, which was many miles from where they were injured. And Harriet died in the hospital, which was in Sanford, Florida, which we recall is the place where Trayvon Martin was killed decades later. And so they died in 1951. Their deaths galvanized the push for equality. In 1990, the state of Florida added their home to the historic register as in recognition of their contributions and the evils that had taken their lives and the complicity of the state of Florida in firing them for the work that they had done. And so we would think that that marks a culmination, except that we have reached a moment where they can be part of the historic register in the state, but the schools can't tell you why they are part of the historic register. And so the inversion of this is pernicious. And so it goes directly to the heart of the matter of education. And I'll say one last thing about this, because I don't want to talk too long on this. But when we saw that doll test, which everyone has seen now, the doll test that illustrated that, you know, Kenneth and Mamie Clark, it was really Mamie Clark, but more than, you say Mamie and Kenneth Clark, this doll test that showed the debilitating effects of segregation, where Black children thought that the white doll was smarter, that the white doll was better, that the white doll was more beautiful, and then they recognized the black doll as being the one that they resembled, and the kind of inferiority that was being bred into them through the system of segregation, which inherently violated the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment. And so this doll test is there for a very specific reason. What we have seen, very much in concert with what CRT would have predicted, and we can talk more about that later, was that the language of harm has now been inverted in such a way as to say that the children who are being psychologically damaged are white. And so it has taken Brown and attempted to turn it inside out and say that the measures that are being used to prevent this kind of psychological harm to Black children are implicitly discriminatory and dangerous to, injurious to, white children. And that's the kind of lopsided, upside-down world we're living in with direct implications for how our children can be educated. And if we don't, the last thing I'll say is this, history makes the present make sense. And if we can't educate our children in this way, there's no possibility of us heading off the kind of malignant existential threat we see racism posing to us as a civil society right now.
Thank you so much for that story. I mean, it is a perfect segue, especially the doll test, to what I want to ask Pam and Drew, because you talked about the effect of the doll test, what it revealed about the effects of segregation on Black children. And the court took note of that in the opinion. They talked about the inferiority complex that segregation inflicts upon Black children. But what was also part of the record in Brown didn't make it into the opinion is the effect that segregation has on white students and the false sense of superiority that it imbues in them. And this feeling of merit based on no evidence or record of merit, this feeling of having gained or achieved a status with no effort does not actually enter to the benefit of white students either. And the segregation is part of what we're seeing now, right? It's the isolation of history and race from the education of white students. So I want to ask what your experience has been. Actually, I'll start with you, Drew. What have you experienced in your high school in terms of the curriculum being shaped for the protection of white students? And how has that impacted you? And how have you seen it impact your white peers?
For me, I have certainly seen kind of a turn away from the harm that historically what Americans have done to African-Americans, putting the emphasis solely on them for correcting their wrongs, only focusing on how white Americans realized slavery were wrong and changed it, not focusing on all of the work and effort and sacrifice that African-Americans had to do to change it. Putting the emphasis on Johnson for creating the Civil Rights Act and not those figures that worked tirelessly and effortlessly in order to change. And that, it robs African-American students of being able to see themselves in the curriculum as they are only portrayed as victims and not activists and active in their own life, which, and to me, robs them of that leadership, robs them to see some of their confidences. They don't see themselves in leadership positions and only see themselves as victims. It gives white students this false sense of, oh, we will do the right thing because we've always done the right things, as they don't have to confront the difficult things their ancestors might have done and grow from that, and instead just being portrayed this perfected version of America that does not exist, but we must aspire to and work for instead.
Thank you. That is such a, that is such a significant observation, because what you're describing is a curriculum that perpetuates a white savior narrative and leaves Black people and other people with no agency in their conditions, and therefore no stories to inspire them to transcend their current conditions, which can be incredibly debilitating for young people in particular. So thank you for sharing that. And I know your mother has been very active in trying to change the curriculum through the action plan that you created along with other members of Creed. Can you tell us about the Creed mission and what your action plan mandates and why it received such backlash?
Absolutely. So Creed is an organization of parents of African-American students whose focus is on the implementation of a diversity, equity, and inclusion plan in Carroll ISD. In our view, that plan would include five key components. It would include a hiring of a director of DEI. It would include training to both teachers and students on issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion, broadening our curriculum, establishing a grievance process where students who were victims of bullying, harassment, and discrimination could have their concerns heard and ensure that our code of conduct was implemented consistently and universally, which was something that we learned was not happening in our schools. And then finally, ensuring that our school district recruits and retains and rewards diverse professionals, paraprofessionals, and auxiliary employees. Originally, our hope was that we would work with the school district to develop this plan, but our efforts were completely rebuffed, and that was what led to our complaint before the Board of Education that the Legal Defense Fund is helping us to make sure that our voices are heard.
That's wonderful. We got involved in this case because we heard about not only the climate you all were experiencing, but the effort that you were trying to make to have some very significant interventions in the school system. So there were sort of two competing efforts happening at once. What have you both experienced in terms of the changes in the curriculum in response to the legislation that's been introduced in Texas and other states across the country, although you guys are really in the belly of the beast, I have to say?
We are indeed. And when we first learned that the diversity plan would not be implemented, of course, we were heartbroken, but we also did not realize the ongoing effects of that, because what has happened is that it's emboldened the forces against educational equity, and they've gone on to pull books from our libraries, to discipline teachers who had books titled, this book is anti-racist. We have had our director of curriculum instruct teachers that they have to teach both sides of the Holocaust. It's been just a pernicious effect. Drew, do you want to speak some more to that?
Yeah, you can definitely see how it's been debilitating teachers as they are nervous to portray African-American struggles and the rougher sides of history. I've had teachers feel forced to say that states' rights was a cause of the Civil War and not put that focus on slavery. I have seen discussions have to be stopped as, like, in my original psychology textbook, there was a chapter on gender identity, sexuality, and learning about all of that. And in class, we just skipped over it completely, the teacher trying their best to not say anything that could offend a select few, hampering the education of all of us.
Yeah, and I appreciate you servicing that, because one of the significant issues that we're seeing is not only is it affecting issues of race and issues of gender, but the students who sit at the intersection of those two categories are really suffering from a double erasure. And that can be incredibly damaging on the psyche. Jade, I want to bring you into the conversation with Ms. Lam. She is a teacher, so I want to put that respect on your name. You're doing wonderful work. And you're teaching young students. You're teaching pre-K through...
Pre-K 3, so they're returning 4.
That's wonderful. So these very, very young learners. I want to ask you a question. I don't know if most of you followed the confirmation hearing for who will be the first Black woman Supreme Court Justice, Katanji Brown Jackson. But for those of you who did, you'll recall that Senator Ted Cruz, from your state, I don't attribute that to you at all. But Senator Ted Cruz asked Judge Brown Jackson whether she thought babies were born racist after showing her some book that he used as a spectacle in the hearing. And you are really with the youngest students that a public school system has. Can you tell me what you think about the effects of teaching children from an early age about identity, about race, and what you're seeing on the ground?
Well, to answer your question, I don't think children are born racist. I think they're taught to be racist. And in my classroom and in the ECE, Early Childhood Department, we really focus on social-emotional learning. How do you interact with others? How do you interact with people who do not look like you? And I feel like in my classroom, that's what we emphasize, because they... And I feel like in my classroom, that's what we emphasize, because they, like little people have strong emotions, they have big emotions. So we really have to teach them how to calm down, how to talk through what you're feeling and stuff like that.
And do you feel that you would have the capability to, to do that work if you were prohibited from talking about race specifically, or talking about different types of family structures, or gender, or anything along those lines?
Oh, listening to Drew speak, I was thinking, like, I can only imagine being in front of a classroom and not being able to teach my own history, you know? Like, I'm a black educator, but my blackness comes first. So I would have to emphasize that and make it, make everyone feel comfortable in the classroom. I don't think I would be able to teach a classroom without teaching a watered-down history version.
Yeah. And that's, I want to circle back, Jelani, to the question that I asked about, what do you think the impact might be on our democracy? Because we're, we're looking at a spectrum, right? You're representing the young children that you teach up to an incredibly promising, rising college freshman, which is very exciting. You still have to tell us what your future plans are when I come back to you. And I want to know what you think the impact of, of this exclusion of truth, even if it isn't in every state. Right now, there are, I think, eight states who have excised certain books and, and, and curricular tax and conversation and discourse from public school curricula. So these are tax-funded schools that have a very limited lens on US history and have, what we believe, intentionally excluded on the basis of race and gender and other protected classifications, certain elements of our history. How do you, if we project, if we, if we don't win this fight, what do you project that our democracy will look like 18 years from now, when these children are of voting age, or maybe 16 years from now, when these children are of voting age and they are becoming members of our society?
Sure. I mean, so I think that, one, in order to, to contextualize what the impact of that is, we have to understand why history was such a fraught subject in the first place, because people were creating narratives that would justify the current state of affairs, which is why, when I always point to my students about Dr. Carter G. Woodson, you know, who was, you know, the founder of Negro History Week, which now is Black History Month, and was the second black person to get a PhD from Harvard, you know, the first one being W.E.B. Du Bois, and they both were historians. And so they were looking at this in 1895, in 1903, 1904, when Woodson finished. And of all the things that were needed in the black community at that time, why did these two people go into history? Because they were trying to disrupt the narrative that had justified that exploitation in the first place. And, you know, I know your husband, Ben, could talk about this, you know, with equal depth and clarity, you know, my fellow Howard University historian. But, you know, we look at this and say, what kind of future is being rationalized if we remove this element from our curriculum, in that our students don't know anything about this? History is supposed to have a effect of at least partially immunizing us against the worst behaviors of the past, so we can recognize these dangers as, oh, this is like the situation that occurred before, or under these circumstances, this is what led to these kinds of conflicts. Our students don't have that equipment, or they wouldn't have that equipment. And so the behaviors that we've just seen, the horrific, malevolent actions that we saw in Buffalo, the similar actions that we saw in Pittsburgh, the actions that we saw in El Paso, the actions that we saw in Emmanuel, at Emmanuel AME in Charleston, South Carolina, those are the four that we mentioned. We could talk about the attack on the Jewish Community Center in Kansas, we could talk about the attack on the Sikh temple in Wisconsin. There are dozens of these attacks that represent a recurrence of a dynamic that is deeply rooted in our history, and that becomes illegible when you airbrush history into only talking about the most salutary portions of it.
Well, that is so sobering. And we also know there's the Atlanta SPA shootings, that anti-Asian violence has been on the rise in an acute way. And, and what I, why I think this historical context is so important, we always say, if you don't know the past, you know, it can repeat itself. And to know that this, this violent trajectory is not going to end well, right? I mean, if, if people understood their history, they would know that this is not the way forward, despite whatever grievances they may carry. And so I want to, I want to give you a chance to tell us, Drew, what your future plans are. And also, how equipped do you feel? You are so historically grounded and have such, such a piercing analysis of what's happening at your school, that I'm not necessarily worried for you, per se. But I'm thinking about your classmates and this environment that they've had to endure over the past four years or more. How equipped do you think they are? And again, I'm talking about not only the students who, whose histories have been erased, but, but those who have also been subject to this erasure of history. How do you think the students in your class are prepared to live in a multicultural, multi-ethnic, global society?
I feel like they are not prepared. They don't have the tools in order to engage with a diverse workforce. Research study after research study has shown that being able to work with many different perspectives enhances the quality of the product.
That's right.
But they aren't given the tools in order to be able to work with a diverse workforce, as, as they have been put in an environment where they are rewarded for only focusing on their environment, not adequately given punishment if they are, like, giving behaviors that creates an environment where marginalized communities don't feel comfortable talking. When in my city, a video of white students shouting the N-word was released, there was nearly no consequences given to them, meaning that in the future, or they will not recognize that this was ill behavior, making it so that when they're engaging with minority, like, workers, they will not adequately listen, they will not adequately, you know, work with them, not being able to create that, like, diverse environment. As well, if any of them, as well, they're given this false narrative that progress just happens, that progress is just, with history going forward, progress happens, which creates an environment where people don't work as hard for civil rights, is they are not given the correct knowledge that, no, it's through effort, it's through sacrifice that this advances, is making them less likely to work for that better world, since they are given, you know, false information on how it became like that.
But that's so right. And that's the work that we're trying to do at the Legal Defense Fund through our pro-truth work. So it's not just to beat back the legislation that we think is harmful and that is excising this important information from the curriculum. It's also an effort to, which is what, you know, you're doing, Pam, it's also to infuse that history into curricula. It's not as if before this anti-truth wave happened, we were all satisfied with the public school curricula in, across the country. It was still devoid of so much history, so much context, and so much of, of the learning that you described, Drew. And that's what our effort is now, is not just to beat back the legislation, but to infuse more truth in it. And I do want to shout out the LDF staff, who has done phenomenal work, testifying before state legislatures across the South. We just beat back some anti-truth legislation in South Carolina, which is no small feat, if you think about that state. And we've been doing that work across the South and have had some real successes to claim, so I'm, I'm proud of that. Unfortunately, we didn't get to the Texas legislature enough enough. And with that legislature, I'm not sure we could have done anything anyway, although we tried. But fortunately, we are still pursuing that and, and will take it all the way to court if we need to. So I want to turn to some solutions. We have about 15 minutes left, and I want to make sure that we talk about how we work on these issues. And so Pam, if I could ask you a very pointed question, and I'll, I'll raise it in this way. We saw a Michigan state legislator, Mallory McMarrow, I don't know if you all saw the viral clip, a clip of a, of a white woman state legislator who basically called on her fellow white women to come get your people, like, what is happening right now? This is not the world we want our children to live in, regardless of whether you are a mother of a black child or a, a child of another protected class, this just can't be a healthy society in which to raise children. How do we reach out to other parents or other caregivers to bring them into this fight, even if they don't have a stake, because they have a child who's affected in the system in a very direct way?
Right. Thank you for that question. When I think about educational equity, you know, I think everybody has to realize that if you are white, well-off, heterosexual, cisgender person, you probably already have the benefits of educational equity, and we are simply asking, as a point of fairness, that those benefits extend to everyone. But even if you don't think that you are part of this fight, you are wrong, because we've learned that the opponents of educational equity do not stop at efforts. When they stop a diversity plan, that is not the end of it. They are moving on to shape everybody's educational outcome, they are forcing everybody to have a very narrow worldview. And once that's accomplished, as we spoke to earlier, our, all of our students do not have the global perspective that's essential to compete in today's world. And that lack, that cultural ignorance, is a danger not only to our democracy as a whole, but as we saw with recent events, to, to all of our safety.
No, thank you, thank you for that. Because effectively, what a lot of young adults have been doing is segregating themselves in online platforms, where there's an echo chamber of hate and dysfunction and, and white supremacist doctrine, that has allowed them to create their own segregated system, which, which we know has such nefarious consequences. So Jade, thinking about segregation, right? You teach in a, you teach a predominantly black class, and you are in a predominantly black school, and one of the, one of the, the outgrowths of Brown was to attempt to educate, I mean, sorry, to integrate schools in order to provide education equity for black students. Tell me how that's playing out in your school district, and whether your school has the resources that it needs, and what some of the, what some of the, the challenges are in a segregated school system.
Well, one of the things that I noticed moving from New Jersey to DC, well, I teach in a public school, and if you walk down a block or two blocks, there's a private school right there, and it's like that all across DC. And being in pre-K three, you'll see that a lot of the white students, they come to public school because it's free. Or a couple of years, like, after, maybe kindergarten or first grade, they'll switch to a private school. And that'll just show you how it's not really segregated, but definitely a hidden agenda there. And I would also like to say that I have, well, this is my first year teaching, right? And I've been around a lot of professionals and social workers and, like, family liaisons and stuff like that. And my social worker specifically, she works from pre-K through third. So it's probably like 100 students to that one professional. And you can see that the lack of resources, that students might get lost or overlooked, and they don't get the resources that they need. And being in a predominantly a black school, I feel like a lot of the students are school-dependent. They come to school to eat, they come to school for clothes. If they need anything, I'm their person of contact. And I would also like to say that, like, families, not that they don't take advantage of the resources, but they don't have access to, they don't know where to get them, as if they're not in a school.
Yeah, that, that's really important. And one of the things that, one of, one of the goals as part of our, you know, future strategies around education equity is to ensure that we keep teachers like you in the system. So many black teachers find it difficult to advance in their careers in the public school system, don't have the resources that they need to be supported to do that. So I really do thank you for the work that you're doing, and we want to support that by helping more black teachers stay in the school system, because we know that educational outcomes are vastly improved when black students have black teachers as part of their educational experience, and so many do not. So Jelani, as we, as we get ready to close out and open up for just a couple of questions, I want to ask you to give us the historical perspective of how we get out of this mess. We talked about this cyclical progress backlash, progress backlash, you know, Brown, massive resistance, George Floyd uprising, anti, anti-truth backlash. I have felt that we are in a moment of reckoning, and that this is a real opportunity for us to actually see what was weak, what was broken, what was rot and toxic, and to rebuild something much stronger, much more aggressive and radically equitable than anything we've experienced before. Now, all of the strategies and pathways to get us there are still unfolding themselves, but I've got to think that this is a way for us to, to now see, see what we all thought might have been a solid democracy, and to see all of the fissures that exist within it. How do we, how do we do that and leapfrog ahead of where we were to a place of, of much greater progress, so that we don't ever have a retrogression of this magnitude?
I think that we're talking about history, what history can provide for us here. You know, I'm reminded of that relationship between Charles Hamilton Houston and Thurgood Marshall, whom he plucked as one of his star students at Howard University Law School. And that picture of them, a young Thurgood, fresh out of law school, I think it's the Gaines case, you know, he and his mentor at this table in 1938, arguing this case about desegregation. And those images of a much older Marshall in 1954, carrying the blueprint that his mentor had helped create to achieve the Brown decision. And I say that to say that we have to be prepared for long-term commitment, that these are long-term fights. But I also think that a key part of this is that, you know, Earl Warren did something unusual in the immediate run-up to that Brown decision being released, in that he, it was a seven-to-two decision originally, and he went and lobbied the other two justices to, because he felt that history needed a nine-zero unanimous decision. And Warren understood a number of things, having been a governor and attorney general prior to being on the Supreme Court, he understood the political context of this. But more importantly, he understood national self-interest. He understood that ending segregation was a matter of America's national security in the midst of the Cold War. I think that, and I've said this, you know, a number of times, there are people who will never particularly care about the effects that this kinds of behavior has on African people. There are people who will never care about the resurgence of antisemitism. There are people who will look at the slaughter in Walmart of all of those people because of their Latino descent, and they will not be moved by that. But I think that we nonetheless have to present the self-interested argument, that these forces are as volatile and destructive and potentially dangerous to your life as they are to these other communities. And that's part, at least part, I think, of the answer to how we get ourselves out of this cycle.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more. I think we have got to recognize our linked destinies. There is no way out of this without each other. I mean, or either this whole thing is going down, which obviously some people are, are fixated on, on, on doing. But then we've got wonderful young people like Drew, who are headed to great places and about to do great things. So this is your time to tell us what you're about to do, and I want to hear your hopeful note. What are you looking forward to, even despite the sort of bleary landscape that we've painted and that you've experienced? What do you plan to do going forward?
I plan to go to Rice University, where I plan to pursue a degree in both psychology and economics.
Oh, good for you. Congratulations.
That's wonderful. Congratulations. Congratulations. That's exciting.
Thank you. I really have to thank the people who've supported me, like my mother, as well as, well, I've been given an incomplete education through my school, through efforts like using internet resources in order to gain a better education of the African-American and civil rights struggles, through museums like the African-American History Museum in DC that I've gone to recently. It is possible to gain a greater understanding of the civil rights movement in order to see the hard work and effort that was necessary in order to advance this country and make it what it is. For me, I feel like people who are against this education will be like, you are just trying to hate America. You are just trying, if you don't like it, why don't you go somewhere else? But for me, a love of this country is not born from ignorance. Love is born from acknowledging all of the awful things it has done, all of the horrors that it has created, and still deciding this vision of a land that is for all, where everyone has liberty, is good enough, that despite all of this, I will still work. We will still try to make it live up to this vision and as created. If you're willing to decide that and work for that, that is true love for this country.
That is patriotism. You sound like James Baldwin right there. That's beautiful. That's beautiful. And Pam, Mom, what do you want to say about what you're hoping to get out of this experience? And I hope you're going to keep fighting, even though your son is off to college.
Yes, we will certainly continue to fight. We want to make things better for all the students that come behind Drew. I think those were really inspirational words, Drew. I think what we've learned through this process is not only the forces that oppose us, but the forces that support us. And that has been a very welcome lesson indeed, to find the strength of LDF and others throughout the community who join us in believing that a curriculum that is not diverse and inclusive is a completely incomplete curriculum that harms everyone, that hurts our democracy, that hurts our safety. And so I am optimistic that, you know, through this fight, although apparently it's going to be a lengthy one, we will ultimately get the result that we are hoping for.
Thank you for that. So I think I'm getting the sign that we don't have time for questions, but our panelists are around and will be here for the reception. So if you have questions, you can ask them personally. And so I'm so glad you mentioned the long struggle. We are not, you know, loathe to immediate wins, and we've had some, as I mentioned, and we're very proud of those. But it is a long struggle. It is a condition that I don't think will ever put the Legal Defense Fund out of business. Our democracy is one that requires constant maintenance, constant vigilance. And racism is in the pores of this country. And as much as we can do to try to rid ourselves of that taint, it will always require our vigilance. And this is part of the work that we are fortunate and privileged enough to do with support like people like you and with brave clients like you and wonderful teachers who are doing that work and brilliant minds that continue to tell us about our history and who write with such power about our truths in media. So I want to thank our panelists. Please join me in thanking them for this rich conversation. And I'll end where I began. Happy Brown Day. Let's celebrate.